Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I am the Vice Chair of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of December 1st. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329, and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. First on the agenda this evening is public participation, and no one has asked to address the committee this evening. However, if anybody wishes to do so, please contact us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. Next is Chairperson and Members' Reports. Does anybody have anything this evening? Thank you. Next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Everyone had an excellent Thanksgiving break. It was good to be able to take a bit of a break away from the day-to-day, but in leading up to that, certainly there were a lot of endeavors to traditional drives to help those who are more needy. I know it was a personal items campaign at the high school, for example, that went well. The high school had their traditional town meeting, although this year it was done via Zoom instead of in the crowded auditorium. And I appreciate that Mr. Vizdlo and the Student Council continue that tradition of finding an opportunity for student voice. I know that the different questions and comments that came up, the high school administration is working with the Student Council as appropriate to look into those items. I will just mention, I know that in the email I sent with tonight's agenda, in one of my attempts at humor, talked about the winter forecast, but did link to an ad for snowplow drivers for the town of Shrewsbury. And they are, as many have seen in various news reports, that towns and cities are running below where they typically are when it comes to being able to have sufficient number of snowplow drivers to deal with snow removal this coming winter for a variety of reasons, just like other sectors of the economy where it's been difficult to find help. And I will be communicating out with the whole parent and staff community in the next couple of days. But the reality is, if there isn't sufficient staffing to run all the snow routes as they typically would, all the plow routes, it is quite likely that situations that in a typical year, we would be able to have a delayed opening of school, that we will have to cancel school for the day. Because obviously, the first primary responsibility for those snowplow drivers is to get the roads cleared. When they're done clearing roads, then they're able to move on to clear parking lots in the schools. And the Highway Department Division works closely with the Public Buildings Division around public buildings, responsible for immediate clearing of sidewalks and entrances and exits and so on at the school buildings. And the Highway Department clears the parking lots. And obviously, we may have situations where the roads are cleared, but the parking lots can't be in time even for a delayed opening. So that could be an impact that we experience in this coming winter. We'll knock on wood that we'll have a mild forecast and not too many snow events, at least on school days. But again, just a way that the current labor market could impact our school operations in a way that maybe some folks would not be anticipating. So we'll keep, obviously, we'll do the best we can. We always want to try to, first and foremost, obviously, we focus on safety when I make the decisions about whether to have school or not. And then, of course, we do want to have students in school to, we know how interruptions, certainly more so than ever, can play into students' academic progress. And beyond that, of course, it's important for families in terms of their work schedule, and they have to make decisions. So I'll continue to try to communicate effectively regarding what to anticipate. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. And we will stay with you when you get back to your seat.
Mr. LaRue is not with us this evening to run the slide deck, so it's a self-service model this evening. Ms. Wapowski from Shrewsbury Media Connection certainly helped us get set up here a little bit ago. So this is the report that we do at each meeting regarding our response to the pandemic, and particularly our statistics, reminding everyone that our primary goal is to have as much in-school learning as possible uninterrupted, minimizing disruptions while we use mitigation strategies to minimize risk from COVID-19. This approach is implementing those mitigation strategies that reduce the risk of transmission. And then, as far as our students, we want to make sure we're creating a sense of belonging, supporting their social, emotional, and mental health needs, and providing learning opportunities for academics that support their needs for learning. And I think, although it's been an incredibly challenging year, our staff continue to do an excellent job with this, and we appreciate the support families are giving us at home in support of students as we get back into some more normalcy, but still an environment that's not typical this year. As anyone who's been paying attention has recognized, numbers have been ticking up in terms of positivity rates and case counts. The Massachusetts positivity rate compared to the rest of the country is still in a very good place, but up over 4% at this point in the Johns Hopkins measure in terms of the seven-day positivity rate, which is only 1% below the 5% threshold that they reference, which comes from the World Health Organization, which is a benchmark about when communities may want to consider restricting various activities, closing different things, et cetera. I want to be very clear, that doesn't mean that if we hit the 5% threshold or go over it, that means we're going to stop having in-person school. We had in-person school last year with numbers above that. And obviously, we're in a very different environment now with vaccinations and so on, but it is a benchmark that we pay attention to. In terms of cases, you can see those are compared to the last time I reported two weeks ago, are higher, 4,600, 4,700, in our age ranges from 0 to 9 and 10 to 19, similar to decades of people in their 20s and 30s. So case counts have definitely moved higher. And obviously, as the weather's gotten colder, that's been something that's been predicted. But the next slide shows that still, although higher than the last time, you know, relatively rare event that young people are hospitalized in terms of the, due to COVID-19. Locally, Shrewsbury's, this is a 14-day positive test rate at 2.5%, and the case count for the town was pretty similar the last couple of weeks. So it remains to be seen whether Shrewsbury's going to trail behind the state as a whole for a while or not. But again, it's about halfway to that 5% benchmark. Locally versus the town cases, you know, towns moved up into the last couple of weeks with over 60 cases each week. The weekend in November 26th, the most recent complete week, we had 10 student cases. But this week so far, we already have 16 student cases. And right around now is when we're going to start likely seeing cases that could have happened over the Thanksgiving holiday that began last Wednesday. And so we'll have to see if we have any sort of significant increase, or if this is trending similar to where it's been in past weeks. Cases this week, again, 18. Because we were out of school for several days, you can see that only six of those cases, it was a situation where a student was actually in school during their infectious period, because depending on when the case was identified, they may have been out of school long enough. In some cases, they were quarantining already because of an outside case in their family. We had zero cases at this last week traced to probable exposure in school. So cumulatively, we're now over 200 cases since the start of the school year, 209. And 32 of those cases, the student wasn't in school during their, I'm sorry, 156 of those cases, the student was or individual was in school while they were infectious. And then, there are 32 cases at this point that we've traced to either possible or probable exposure in the school setting. This is the second week we've reported on breakthrough cases in terms of vaccinated individuals. You can see among students of the 177 cases, this is as of last Friday, there are 63% of the cases were students who are not old enough to be eligible for vaccination yet, so unvaccinated. 24% of the student cases were among unvaccinated students who they and their families had the choice. And 15% of student cases were among vaccinated students. For staff, 87% of the cases are among vaccinated individuals, which stands to reason since a very significant majority of staff are vaccinated. Only four cases of unvaccinated individuals among staff. And so that is, again, we would expect pretty much the only, very, very few cases that are not breakthrough cases among staff because so many, such a large percentage is vaccinated. Just a reminder that we publish our dashboard each Monday for data that's through the previous Friday to match up with the town's reporting cycle as well, and that can be found in the link on our homepage. This graphic shows the cases by day, and you can see over the month of November, really kind of an interesting phenomenon. We had, you know, handful of cases a day at the very beginning of the month, then we had several days with no cases. Then we had several days with the kind of higher numbers, with some lower numbers interspersed in between. So it's been a bit up and down, and we'll have to see whether that trends in a certain direction or not as we hit December. This is the weekly case count. And you can see that after moving up substantially over one of our lower points in mid-November, the case count came back down a little bit the next week. Based on the numbers so far this week, we'd expect that to titch back up again. This is the graphic that shows us by school. Most cases at Shrewsbury High School, our largest population is there, of course, but we see, and you'll see grade by grade, you know, interesting some numbers there. But you can see among the elementary schools, the number of cases, and where we are at the middle level. On a grade-by-grade basis, you can see our top grade interestingly is 4th grade. Students who until very recently were not eligible to be vaccinated. Next highest were seniors, and which is, you know, interesting in that those are our students, of course, who are physiologically as most like adults. And so, you know, wondering where we have such low numbers among our 9th and 10th graders. But then, as students get into their junior and senior years, we have those numbers being a bit higher despite the fact that a large number of those students are vaccinated. So just of interest, I don't pretend to be able to say why that is the case, but interesting to note. This is just the total cases of students versus staff cases so far this year. And then shifting again to our Test and Stay Program, continues to be an important program. We administer now over 2,500 tests to 950 different individuals who have participated. Again, they have to be someone who's a close contact of a case that originated at school. And we've saved over 2,500 student learning days as a result of this program, which I think across the nation is really the gold standard in terms of being able to provide options for students who otherwise would have to quarantine. In terms of the routine safety testing, also known as surveillance or pooled testing, we have about 25% still of people participating. We need to look at ways to try to get that number up. We've had 24 tests of people who are asymptomatic, but we caught a positive case 24 times as a result of that. So again, our goal is to minimize disruptions to learning while minimizing the risk of COVID-19 in our schools. And so far, we've been able to maintain that goal, and we hope to continue to do so despite some of the challenges that may be before us. And we'll keep monitoring, obviously, the situation with the new variant. And we'll be paying a lot of attention to what public health experts and infectious disease experts have to say about that in the coming weeks. And with that, be happy to answer any questions the committee has.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Any questions or comments to the committee? Lindsay.
Just really quickly, want to acknowledge the Test and Stay Program and what that means for, as a parent who went through this just right around the holiday and in advance thereof, just a wonderfully efficiently-run program. I know we had to move it mid-year, and it's now over by the sort of town soccer fields there off near the police station. But really well done, moving people through and getting kids back to school. And I happen to know a couple other parents in the same classroom who also said, wow, this was great. When I first got the call, I thought I'm out of work for the next bunch of days. And in fact, having a really, really positive experience there. So I appreciate, it's yet another thing that we're juggling this year. But just want to commend people for both, you know, running a really well-done program, but also just acknowledging how important it is to keep kids and families sort of moving forward through the pandemic. So thank you very much for that, Dr. Sawyer.
No, I think it's been, again, an outstanding program, and we've been able to really appreciate the work that Patrick Collins, April Yu, and integrating with the team of providers through, it's a subcontractor, Dr. Collins, Meet the Caregivers that the state subcontracted with. And again, it's a program that really has been extremely beneficial. So I appreciate that you had that experience. I was trying to pull up a number here, which I can't do. I meant to do this before. I also meant to mention that tonight is the second afternoon-evening of a very successful COVID vaccine clinic that's being held at Oak Middle School. This is in partnership with our local Central Mass Regional Health Alliance. And Noah Freeman, the Director of School Nursing, was instrumental as the liaison from our district to this group. Also want to thank Dr. Tim Gibson, who's our school physician, who's a pediatrician at UMass and UMass Medical School, who, not only he himself was there last night and is there this evening, but had several UMass medical students come to administer vaccines, without whom we couldn't have run the clinic. We had well over 300 vaccinations last evening, and sent out a reminder this afternoon. And as of when I was over there, before I came to this meeting, there were tipping over 300 already for this evening as well. We did open it in addition to all the families. Primarily, the purpose was to get vaccinations to students in the younger age group who had become eligible, but we also made it open to any members of their family who wished to get a booster or an initial vaccination. And we also opened it up to staff as of this afternoon as well. And I did see a few staff members over there getting a booster shot. So we appreciate the partnership with Worcester Public Health through the Central Mass Alliance and UMass Medical School. And tomorrow evening is the third evening, and then there are three companion dates that are coming up later in December. But if you're interested, if you're a family, check your email. We sent out a reminder today. There's a link where you need to pre-register. It's pretty easy. You park right in front of Oak Middle School, go in by the auditorium door, and they can help you. So again, appreciate that partnership and glad we were able to make that work. There's clearly a high level of demand, and we know that it hasn't been easy for families to access some of these initial vaccinations for their young children, just as a result of what the amount of supply and appointments available. So this was a successful clinic for the community.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Any other questions or comments? And just so you know, there was chatter on social media today about these clinics. So I think it's getting a lot of publicity, which is great, and it's giving access to families who may have times that can't get there during the day. So this is, I think, really another good thing that we're doing for the community.
And I should mention in addition to Ms. Freeman, a number of our school nurses were also there as well, administering vaccines, which we greatly appreciate. So again, it's a community effort, and, you know, all the steps we can take to maintain as much stability in school as we can and minimize risk is something that behooves us to do. So again, thank you. We'll look forward to continuing to provide this information at future meetings.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment, and it's actually some good news. Per school committee policy, 9-1-1, gifts of 5,000 or more must be formally accepted by the school committee. Dr. Sawyer will acknowledge a gift in the range of $45,000 to $55,000 from a community member who wishes to remain anonymous, but who would like to procure new cafeteria tables with attached seating for the Floral Street School cafeteria. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins and Ms. McCubery, Principal at Floral.
Thank you, Mrs. Fritz. I would just say briefly that, again, we had a community member who reached out to Mrs. McCubery to take the initiative to offer up a donation to replace cafeteria tables, their original equipment to the building when that opened in 1997. So that furniture is 24 years old and reaching its end-of-life cycle. It was also set up in a way, when that building opened, to have the tables separate from the chairs and with the thought of kind of having flexibility for adults in the evening, but they're really adult-sized chairs. And so the idea here is from the donor to replace that with cafeteria-style tables that are more befitting of an elementary school child with the seats affixed to the table, kind of like you have in the picture here. And these tables, of course, fold up in the middle. They're on casters and can be moved about quickly for maintenance purposes. And so, Ms. McCubery, been working with the vendor. You want to just talk a little bit about a couple of meetings you had with the vendor and where that is right now?
Sure, and you helped us out with that, which we appreciate. But we met with the vendor a couple of times. And actually, the donor was actively involved as well, which we really appreciated. And just kind of talked about our budget, talked about our needs and wanting to be flexible, talked about, because we use that space for all kinds of purposes. So wanting to think about adults fitting on the seats as well as young students. And, you know, the vendor was terrific and gave us, of course, the fun part for me was the color coordination. And so we spent some time getting feedback from staff members too, because we wanted it to be, you know, something we all had a say in. And yeah, and that's that. And then Patrick helps us out.
Yeah, and so we're kind of ready. We have actually final numbers now. The final quote would be, upon your approval, would be just over $48,000 total. So substantial gift.
Yeah. Very good. Any questions or comments? Again, you know, and we have these donors, and this is a substantial amount of money being given to us at a time when we know the budget is always very tight. So I think this is a huge thank you to this anonymous donor, and really a long-lasting gift for us as a school community.
This donor loves the community, loves the school and the people who come in it, past and present. So just big heart, and we're really grateful.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Dr. Sawyer, any comments or questions?
I will underscore what Ms. McCubery does say, and it is really always, to me, just... So we're just very grateful when people are willing to share their good fortune with the school district in meaningful ways such as this. And I would agree with the donor, who is known to me, doesn't want to be public. But, you know, certainly, as Ms. McCubery said, someone who has a great love for the community in Floral Street School. And we deeply appreciate this offer of this substantive donation.
Thank you. We do need to vote for this. So may I have a motion that the school committee vote to accept a donation in the range of $45,000 to $55,000 to purchase new cafeteria tables with attached seats for the Floral Street School cafeteria?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we will have our annual update from Jake Costa, the Athletic Director of Shrewsbury High School, and Pad Vizilo on the athletic program. Welcome.
Well, thank you for having us. It's always great to be in person with you and share some of the good things that have happened at the high school. And I want to provide the community's... Let me just try and get this mirroring set up. The good things that are happening within, great. Great. There we go. Great, now we're there. The good things that have happened within our athletic program, given the context of the pandemic, and just give an overview of what we did last year during last school year when we were in hybrid. And yet, we had to manage and navigate some of the challenges around that relative to athletics. So Mr. Costa will walk us through a presentation, give some highlights of the program for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Well, thank you. It's hard to believe it's been two years since we've been here. So... But the good thing is we've been, you know, we've been pretty active during these times. I'm proud to say that the high school in Oak Middle School, even though it was reduced, we were able, due to COVID-19 restrictions, we were able to offer as many sports as possible through the regulations of the MIA and public health officials. The number of contests that we played last year was reduced probably about, close to about 50% than on a typical year. And additionally, we had football, volleyball, unified basketball, and indoor track were moved to what we would be a traditional fall sport into a fall-two season that was pinched between the winter season and our spring sports that were started later in April. Unfortunately, at the middle school, we felt there was a big challenge there to run a full athletic program, as we have done in the past. So we were only able to offer, come springtime, baseball and softball for the athletes over there. That was one of the two sports that we felt we could run safely through the different restrictions. We did not offer at the middle school last year, boys and girls cross-country and field hockey in the fall, cheerleading and boys and girls basketball in the winter, and boys and girls outdoor track. Some of the highlights that we have for last year was that we offered 19 different sports. We had 51 different teams participating. We had over 400, about 445 contests compared to the usual 800 contests that we'll have over a year's time. I was very excited, the fact that we were able to offer our unified sports program, both basketball and outdoor track. We were fortunate to have most of our coaching staff come back, so we had 75 coaches there. And we still had the volunteers in our number, and I'm really proud of the fact that people are willing to come in even during the different restrictions that were there to help volunteer and get our kids playing. Last year, through the different four seasons that we played, we saw about 1,203 athletes. Now, some of those people may have played multiple sports. What was really unique is that we actually, for the first time in any of these kids' careers, was we had a couple of athletes that would participate in four sports. So it was very exciting to see, especially we had a couple of gentlemen that played soccer in the fall and decided to go out for the football team in the fall-two season, which really made that experience good for them because they've always, I think the two sports have always worked together and collaborated training in the fall. And now, some of those guys got to experience those different sports. And actually, we had a couple of football players that played soccer in the fall that didn't have that opportunity in the past. Just some more highlights that we had. We actually had four student athletes that signed their letters of intent to play at the college level, so we were excited there. And prior to the start of the season, student athletes and families were required to attend virtually a preseason meeting. And these meetings, while by the time they're seniors, I think most people have memorized those presentations. They were unique last year because of all the restrictions. So we spent a lot of time going over our different protocols and restrictions. We also had the challenge of not having spectators at a lot of our events, especially in the winter season. The amount of technology I think the athletic department learned last year was amazing. Being able to livestream almost every single event, we were able to even livestream at Ski Ward and do a few of the ski races there. So we were pretty happy with that. And during the fall-two and spring seasons, all student athletes were required to participate in weekly COVID testing to maintain eligibility for their different sports. And I just want to take this time to thank a lot of people that made that happen last year and the different challenges. And first off, I was very proud of our league, the Midland-Watson League. I think we were the frontrunners or the leaders within the state to present to the MIAA the opportunity to provide sports for our kids across the state of Massachusetts. And the running joke and story that we had was there were 13 athletic directors spaced out into my entire backyard with 13 different tables. And we were there in August, kind of strategizing, put something together, submitted it to the COVID Task Force at the MIA, which in return, started working with the different boards of health and the Department of Education to get that going. So I was very proud of our league in being there, doing that. To yourselves, the administration, allowing us the opportunity to do that. And a lot of credit needs to go to, too, is our Public Buildings and Parks and Rec Program for getting our facilities and giving us the equipment. There was a lot more equipment that was needed to sanitize after games. Public Buildings really stepped up our custodians more than ever than they usually do. And also, our school nurses worked tirelessly, contact tracing, and the entire staff of nursing within the district, and being able to, you know, discover if someone was positive, contact trace, hopefully not shut teams down or, and make determinations that allow kids to play. And I can't say enough about Walter Hildebrand, our athletic trainer. He was, in every single meeting, making sure that, you know, our students were doing what they were supposed to do, but also reporting back and giving the detailed information that the nurses needed to provide the local health board with the information that they needed to, whether we maintain a season going or teams going or keeping kids out. So I really thank everyone. or keeping kids out. So I really thank everyone. It was all hands on deck for us last year. Going forward, booster organizations, again, the Booster, Shrewsbury Boosters Association and Friends of Shrewsbury Crew still do an amazing job. It was very challenging for them last year. We probably lost almost, you know, fifty to eighty percent of our traditional fundraising was gone because of the restrictions that we had there. But they were still able to provide us with opportunities, you know, for kids that maybe needed funds to participate in our programs or any equipment that we needed for COVID challenges. Next up, our financial report. The fall marked, fall two thousand twenty-one marked our fifteenth year with athletic fees. The fee structure and process was explained at those parent athlete nights, those Zoom meetings at the beginning of each season. And we're very grateful for the fact that you were able to reduce that rate due to the number of contests that were reduced for the athletes. And I know the parents really appreciated that during the pandemic. We also continue to use school pay, and it's been a great resource for us to be able to track down all our fees that we needed and give us, you know, the financial stability we needed. Last year, we roughly raised, threw athletic fees about two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Just going forward in our program, you know, we're very grateful with the opportunities that we provide for our students and contributes to our positive culture at the school. But as we reflect, there are some things going forward that we need to kind of focus on. One is to review and implement, I think we came here a couple of years ago, about the five-year strategic plan with our crew shells and the replacement there and assisting the Friends of Shrewsbury Crew and Boosters Association in replacing some of the older equipment. We need to start looking at that. As we continue to grow, one of the things, if you look at Shrewsbury High School now, Shrewsbury High School and the public school is the second biggest public school in central Mass behind Watsonite Regional. And if you look at both Watsonite Regional, Shrewsbury High School, and even Algonquin Regional High Schools, and you look at our athletic programs, we are built more like a Division III college with the offerings that we're providing for our students. So some of the things we might need to look at in the future as we continue to grow is we need more coverage from the athletic trainer standpoint. Maybe someone brings on either another full-time or part-time person in there to help supervise, especially at the middle school events. As we, you know, we'll be reporting next year, the successful start of football at the middle school and some of our other sports. And more coverage, whether it's through an assistant athletic director position or seasonal supervisor positions to help manage and maintain, whether it's crowd control or just facility needs during contests, both at Oak Middle School and Shrewsbury High School. And I know Dr. Jones and I have talked, there's one last wish list, I think, on the middle school sports standpoint would be boys and girls soccer. Majority of our schools in our league have that. And they feel that we could be a successful program, but not affecting our youth soccer program and working in collaboration as we did with our youth football and field hockey type programs. And for improvements and maintenance of our facilities, we are still grateful for the turf field and all the, we're getting the full use of that. But I think we need some other areas. We have some major damage and issues with our press box. So we really need to look at that as far as infrastructure. Installation, we need more storage as we continue to grow and with our physical education department growing. We've got to look at maybe a facility near our stadium that will allow for Parks and Recreation, Athletics, and PE to manage all their equipment. We continue to need to do improvements to our baseball and softball fields, looking at dugouts, storage, and fencing. The fencing there is the original fencing from when the school opened, which we're looking at twenty years now. So we need some opportunity to repair that, and I'm very grateful for the booster organization and the students raising money. They were able to fix and repair the infield's of the baseball and softball fields last year, which made a major difference in our playing ability. We look at the lower, the former field hockey and soccer, excuse me, field hockey and lacrosse fields, which are now soccer field. You know, we need to look at some fencing and netting around there. And protection, screen protectors for our tennis courts are something else that we need to look at in the future. In conclusion, Shrewsbury Athletic Program provided a great outlet for students to socialize and compete during a difficult time during our history. The athletic program helped students get active and reengage after months of isolation and quarantine. And I'm very grateful for that opportunity, because I, we all know the feeling when it was, when we talked to the seniors in the class of two thousand twenty. It was very hard on that, it was May fifth when Governor Baker shut us down completely. It was a sad day for us in the athletic program, not only because we didn't get to see our seniors finish their careers, and we had some in that senior class that went on, that are going on, that went on to some Division One schools that would have been great to see them finally perform, but also just missing those connections and those relationships with our spring athletes. But being able to do that last year really re-energized and I think made the opening of school easier, because our students were allowed to come back and play sports. And as we continue, we help cultivate and improve social, emotional well-being of our students, allowed to continue to expand on the essential skills such as collaboration, personal responsibility and leadership, and resilience. This has been a challenge this fall, and we'll talk about that a little bit more next year. We're going to continue to talk in the winter and spring. But getting our students to compete again and work hard, not that they don't work hard, but getting back there in shape, getting their minds back in shape. We had to have, you know, a little talk midway through this fall season that I think really changed the environment of our school and especially our athletic program over the last month and a half. And I'm really excited to see how it carries over into our winter and spring seasons. So thank you.
Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Costa and the entire athletic department, the nurses, all of you, everyone within the community that helped get this off the ground last year, given the circumstances around restrictions. I was unfortunately in a number of Zoom calls with parents when we had outbreaks or positive cases, talking about how we're going to test people, how we're going to get people back to play. There were cases where we had to shut down programming last year. We had a break around the December break holiday where we shut down for fourteen days. We also miss them. We had the girls' basketball season prematurely, I think with a week left as a result of a positive test from someone we competed with and we couldn't contact trace or determine that the person on the other team was in the majority of the game and had contact with a number of people on our team. So it was just, it was yeoman's work. It was a ton of work from Jay, between scheduling and busting and referees, and we have a shortage of referees and transportation and all the things that go into it. Think about organizing a big party. He has a big party every single day at that school. This fall, he's had over eight hundred athletes in the fall program, which we're excited to talk about next year. So the program is really, really large. He does a good job managing it. And again, thanks to all you and our trainer and our medical staff who's helped out throughout last year and continue to help it this year. So we're happy to answer. Any questions you may have?
Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments in the committee? Dale?
Two.
Great presentation. I'm curious to know whether you've advanced to the point of putting a price tag on all those things that we would like to replace or improve.
Yes, I'll try the best I can. Costs are up right now. So I've been working with our, I've actually had a volunteer person from the community come in and help work with me on the press box. And we're looking roughly at around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now for the press box. I believe it was two, three years ago, our public buildings came in and did an assessment through some engineers. And the roughly cost came in at five hundred thousand dollars around that time. But I think we could go to more of a prefab-made type. Press boxes more user-friendly than the one that we have now, which brings the cost down. I'm not sure on the storage facility, because again, with construction costs going up right now, I can get a price on that. And dugouts in both the baseball and softball field, we're looking at probably around thirty to forty thousand dollars per field. The lower netting of field is probably, I think, around twenty-five thousand dollars to do the full netting of the field. And our tennis courts was roughly around fifty-six hundred dollars to get the tennis courts. All the wind screens up there, you know, it can be very windy, especially in the spring.
Second question is, you've stated that we have mandatory COVID testing associated with the program. Do we know the status of vaccination for the coaches and players?
So we only had that in the fall-two season, the mandated testing. We are not currently doing the testing. As far as vaccinations, we did not, because we have not asked that question of our athletes. And the coaches' reports, I believe, are coming in the next day or so of the total count of our coaches.
So the coaches will be part of the mandate that you created for staff, so they're under that. And as far as students, you know, to date, you know, we have, our nurses have medical records, so that if a student is close contact or whatnot, we can determine whether or not they're vaccinated and will double-check with the family. But we have not taken any steps to, in advance, to ask people what their status is. But we do know, just from our own internal statistics, that a significant majority of students at the secondary level are vaccinated.
So when a student is vaccinated, that becomes part of that student's medical record with the school?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for the report. Obviously, when we think about arts or drama or athletics, any way that we can engage kids to kind of be on our campuses and involved in sort of like healthy developmental programming. I think clearly athletics is one of those important ones. And the number of young people you have involved is impressive and a testament to the success of it. I would love to know a little bit more. I think I heard you say, but I may have misunderstood, that the, when students are of an inability, I'm always concerned about fees. Worried about fees, keeping kids out of what we think of as really good programming. And so that sits in our purview to set fees, and yes, we reduced them last year. And I, in my dream world, we would get rid of them entirely, but we have to run a whole district. So can you help me understand when a young person can't afford the fees? Kind of what that looks like, who identifies that? And then I think I heard you say that the boosters sometimes help out with that, and so,
Yes.
do we have a sense of how often that's happening, numbers, scale? Like, help me understand. I'm worried both about the stigma of a young person opting to say, forget it, I'm not going to play because I don't want to raise my hand because I'm a tenth grader and I have other things going on. But also just understanding the magnitude of young people that we know who have made it through maybe that social issue and have been identified in some way, or people know from prior years, et cetera. How big of a number we're talking about?
So I don't have that, the big of the number of what the students are, but as far as identifying, it's a lot of a team effort. You know, some of the coaches who are aware of the student situation will come forward on behalf of the student. Sometimes the students themselves will come in and say, you know, I really, I need some help, and we work it out for them. And the other thing is the relationship they've built. Believe it or not, I've had a lot of captains come in to the office and say they know that a certain student might not be playing or participating in a sport because of financial hardships. So then I'll reach out to that student and say, hey, you know, why aren't you playing? And, you know, there'll be a little uncomfortable conversation. But in the long run, I'd say, let me help you out. Let's figure this out, and we do that. But the Booster Club is huge as far as being able to support us in filling those voids for those students. So what they do is, every year, the golf tournament that we have, the Leo Murray Golf Tournament, is, funds are set aside, fifteen hundred dollars to, well, two thousand dollars a year are at least set aside for that. If a student can't afford an athletic fee, maybe some equipment, some of the gear, and kids in this town are very big on their their look and how they look outside of the sports arena. So like, we'll try to identify and help those students. And that was what Leo Murray was about. Leo was a former golf coach of ours, who we always said would take his shirt off his back right here for you, for whatever he needed. So I really am proud of that the boosters uses those funds from that golf tournament to supplement people. But I would say, on a season, probably, I wouldn't say it'd be more than five or six students that we may identify. And it varies depending on the season, you know, probably a little less in the winter, because your winter sports are more like hockey and skiing and all that. People are used to paying. But in your fall and spring season, I would say probably between five to eight students.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think we also rely on our nursing staff heavily in terms of like first line defense, in terms of they may know something that we don't know in our school counselors and also teachers who will forward that along for information for Jay and the boosters. So I think it comes from a variety of different sources, but I think people know different family circumstances, particularly if someone would lose a job, just with their connections, some of those things come in through word of mouth. And I follow up kind of very discreetly through our school counselors or our nursing staff, and then it gets forwarded along to Jay, so. But yeah, have we had, the question is, have we had students that have not participated or resulted in any fee? Absolutely. We've had a conversation with students who are either too proud or don't want to take the money and don't want to take a quote-unquote handout. It's not in their values. So yeah, it's a level of frustration. I can't quantify it, but I think Jay is right on some good years we've had less than ten and on some difficult years we'd have up to twenty, so.
Can I just, do we have a way when a student is registering in Power School or any of our other sort of more automated systems, recognizing this year is a funny year for students to be applying for free and reduced lunch, since lunch is free for everybody? So I know that is an additional, but in prior years, that is sort of a flag in that system? That a young, that a parent is trying to register them that automatically prompts a reduced fee? Or is that, is that something that they have to instigate in some sort of other way?
So there's two features there. So the students need to make sure they apply, or the families need to apply through our food service department. And once the food service department puts that into Power School, when we go to assign the fee, there are two options. Two buttons that happen. One, sign the fall athletic fee or winter or spring athletic fee. It'll be listed at full price. And if a student is clicked off as free reduced lunch, it will go and put in the free and reduced lunch rate. However, you know, sometimes what we have too is the students and their families may not have applied in time. And sometimes they'll get hit with that big bill in their athletic fee. And again, this communication, working with them will fix it for them.
Thank you. Anything else? Jason?
Actually, just to follow up to Ms. Heffernan's question, obviously, I know the Booster's Club works really hard to raise these funds every year. And as you alluded to in your report and your presentation tonight, obviously, the last two years have been a really difficult time to fundraise. This past year in particular, has the Booster's Club been able to meet all of those needs when they've come up? Have there been places where the funding wasn't, was not available?
Yes, so again, looking at both organizations have done a really good job of keeping a reserve in their budgets. For example, I know the Booster Club themselves have invested their money into a money market in allowing to build interest within the account that they were able to use in the shortfall for what we had last year and help out. But it wasn't as high as what they would typically, on a typical year, I think our Booster Club would give, raise between a hundred and eighty and two hundred thousand dollars for the program. Last year, I want to say we were around forty thousand dollars. But they had a good build in the account that they were able to pull from some of that investments to help out when needed. But I was very, very limited on what we asked for, I think, as an athletic department. And then on the Friends and Shrewsbury Crew side, I think, in working with our crew coaches, you know, there was definitely some, you know, future equipment needs that they kind of put on hold because of the shortage of fundraising. And they lost a season, I forgot to add, is that fall. There was no fall, fall and spring of two thousand twenty. So fall and spring of two thousand twenty, there was no rowing going on, so there was no opportunity to raise funds.
At first, I want to thank you for advocating for our student athletes and making sure in a crazy time that we were able to continue these programs. I think it's very important for many students to have this extracurricular activity, especially during this pandemic. And listening to all of the things that had to be done, I mean, we're hearing a lot of what's happened and we're seeing it through the schools, but there's so many other factors that go into it, and it was a huge amount of work. And like you mentioned, you know, buildings and park and rec and nurses, all of that added on to what had to be done. So I just want to thank you for advocating for that. And I think the Oak program is just a great experience, and I hope we can maybe expand into that soccer program, that feed, to feed a program for the high school, and it's another way of getting more students involved, not just academics, but in that extracurricular. And just a comment on the financials, I'm glad that you're putting that before us. So as we move into the budget season, if there's something that you're thinking of that might be in the budget coming to us, this gives us an idea of what's on the horizon. And I do have a question around fees. When I read your report, you know, thinking fifteen years, I can't believe it's been fifteen years and none of us like the fees, but it's a necessary evil in order to have these programs. And when we look at our fees, we always look, you know, throughout the state. And it seems like most school districts do have fees at this point. Is that accurate?
Yes. Yes, I think there's a few schools within our league, I believe Oakmont Regional. Just forget, I think maybe Toronto, I'm not sure. They don't have fees. And you might remember, Oakmont was kind of one of the original schools that started the fees. And it was a year where I think students paid three thousand dollars if you played football, hockey, and baseball. And then the community rallied through their override system. And part of their, I think, were the restrictions with their overrides was they were not going to have fees anymore. And we're talking with their AD, and he's been able to balance that over the past few years. We are, though, one of the highest, definitely the highest in our league, as far as fees go.
Thank you. Dr. Sore, any comments or questions?
I want to thank Mr. Costas, Vizdlo, certainly everyone involved at the Athletic Department, as was mentioned earlier, and particularly Walter Hildebrand, trainer, and our nurses. It was really an extraordinary year, and I know that Mr. Costa commented that the Midland-Watch U.S.A. League had really stepped up to be proactive in trying to get sports back on board, and I think took a leadership role across the state to make that happen. But the school committee should understand that Mr. Costa is a key leader in that league. And, and his personal leadership made a difference, not only for Shrewsbury High School, but for all, many high schools across Central Mass and across the state. And, and Mr. Costa is perceived as a very strong athletic director, leader. And Mr. Vizdlo as well is involved in Midland-Watch League elements and among the principals group. And, you know, it's, it's, it, there's a lot of influence, positive influence that Shrewsbury has as a result. I, I, not only as a superintendent, but as a parent, saw firsthand the, the value of being able to continue or restore athletics last year. And I know that for the, the physical and social and emotional well-being of our, our students, it, it was really, a really key element of what we were able to provide and, and continue to. Because just like our educators in other areas, this year, although better than last year for sure, still has a variety of challenges. And so very pleased and proud that we just came off a very successful fall season this year as well, that Mr. Costa and his entire team have been able to provide those experiences for so many student athletes. And appreciate the, the expansion recently at the middle school level for sure, and appreciate the vision to keep doing more. Obviously, we had an extremely successful capital campaign, bigger and better than pretty much any place around the state as far as I know, with the turf field project. And at some point, once we get our legs back under us, I would imagine that we'll start to look, just as the Boosters have been working on some improvements to the, the baseball and softball fields already, that, you know, obviously, we would like for the, the town to fund, you know, improvements and maintenance, just like they do for any, you know, all of our facilities in town. And we have a very good relationship with the Public Buildings Division and the Parks Division in, in partnership with them to maintain and improve those facilities. But it would not surprise me if sometime in the not-too-distant future, that we try to have another capital campaign to, to continue to improve the facilities. But, and, and we will certainly look to the budget process around some of the other elements, particularly some of the human resources, because Mr. Costa is, is correct. It, it is a program that is very large in scope and very time-intensive, and time-intensive at times when, you know, Mr. Costa is spending a lot of nights and weekends and, because of the nature of the, of the, the program. So again, I'm very grateful, and on behalf of all the student athletes, I just want to express my appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your report.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda, we are going to have a report on the, annual report on the Shrewsbury High School student performance data on standardized tests, including the SAT and AP tests. And Mr. Vizdlo will be presenting, along with Angie Flynn, Director of School Counseling.
Great. So it's great to have two back-to-back reports here, so we can talk about some of the good things that happened, not only in athletics, but also our academics. Again, working with Mrs. Flynn over the last, I guess what's been, two, three months now, she's brought a lot, a, a different perspective from her own experiences as a Director of School Counseling, and has really helped refine some of the things we're doing at the high school, so it's really been great. It's hard to find really excellent leaders, and we certainly have one with Mrs. Flynn. So she'll walk us, help walk us through the report that we have, and we'll be happy to answer any questions at the end that you may have.
Okay, so to summarize the college admissions standardized testing, it starts with the PSAT and MSQT, which is part of the College Board suite of assessments. And that is basically a practice SAT. Students typically take that in their sophomore and junior year. And then students can also qualify for the National Merit Scholarship their junior year. The plan is the Practice ACT, which again is typically sophomore and junior year when students take that exam. SATs and ACTs, these, this is the actual college admissions exam that students use for college admissions. This has changed dramatically in the last two years, given the pandemic. So this year, only thirty-three percent of all colleges require the SAT or ACT. We haven't gotten ACT scores yet, so those haven't been shared with us through ACT. But we'll go through the SAT results, and you will see a drop in participation. And that's basically because schools have gone either test optional or test blind. Majority have gone test optional, which basically means they will consider SAT or ACT scores if submitted. Test blind means they won't even look at them if they're submitted. So, and because of this, sort of test optional and test blind, colleges have seen that there's a twenty-nine percent increase in college applications. So there's been a lot of more applications out there because of this. So I, you know, I will get in more to test optional and test blind, but today actually was an interesting email we received from a college admissions rep regarding a student who submitted SAT scores. And she asked the counselor to please talk with that student so the student could go test optional instead, because he would get higher merit aid based on his GPA and based on his college rigor, or his high school rigor. So, you know, it, we're kind of learning as we're going through this. And colleges have not really said yet what their plan is for next school year, or next, you know, college admission year. So we're kind of waiting for that. And then the last exam is the Advanced Placement AP exams. This is for college credit and replacement, but the bigger piece for AP exams is also the admissions piece, where colleges will use what classes, AP classes students have taken for admissions. All right, so some changes to the College Board Test Administration. So one of the biggest changes this past year is that the SAT no longer offered the optional exams. So that included the SAT essay and the SAT subject tests. So those are no longer offered. And as I said, the COVID nineteen sort of changed the landscape of standardized testing. So two-thirds of the country's universities do not require them. And because of that, we've seen a decrease in the participation. So in the class of two thousand twenty, two-point-two million students took the exam, where this past year, the class of two thousand twenty-one, only one-point-five million. So students are definitely not participating in this exam. And because of that, they're just, you know, increasing their applications, the number of schools they're applying to. SAT scores, so this exam was redesigned about five years ago, two thousand seventeen. So there's two sections, evidence-based reading and writing. The score range is two hundred to eight hundred, and then math is also two hundred to eight hundred. And so the combined score is sixteen hundred. This shows, this graph shows our average score compared to Massachusetts and the national. And as you can see, Shrewsbury does quite well. We're seventy-three points above Massachusetts' average score and a hundred and ninety-seven points above the national score. So our average was twelve fifty-seven out of the sixteen hundred. And this is, shows our participation rate. As you can see, it dramatically decreased. Class of two thousand twenty, ninety-five percent of the students took the SAT exam. Class of two thousand twenty-one, fifty-two percent. And that was approximately two hundred and thirty-nine test takers, and I think that class was four hundred and eighty students.
So just taking a look at the number of males and females relative to scoring on reading and writing and scores across SHS Massachusetts and the nation. If you look at the scores for males on the essay-based reading and writing, it's six nineteen, and females were six fifteen. So the difference was plus four. In Massachusetts, it was five ninety to, five ninety-two to five ninety, which is a plus two. And then again, nationally, five thirty-five to five thirty, which is a plus five. And the mathematics, it's a more dramatic difference. Males were six sixty-one, females six twenty-three for an average at SHS. In Massachusetts, six oh-six, five eighty, with a plus twenty-six gain. And nationally, five thirty-seven, five nineteen for a plus eighteen game. So there's gaps within the male, the female, within mathematics, which has been, I think, the narrative since I was in high school. So we'll continue to monitor this. And I think what we saw, and we can talk a little bit about, relative to the high average score we had, which was over twelve hundred, which we haven't had in the past, I think there's a different level of student applying to higher or more competitive or highly competitive colleges and looking to try and get an advantage to get in. So if you think you're going to score sixteen hundred or really high on those SATs, you might have an advantage of getting in a highly competitive program, so there may be an advantage where other people might not consider that if it's test optional. So again, just a visual bar graph representation of the scores in, in the, the reading and writing, and also the mathematics. And now we'll turn it over to Mrs. Flynn around the PSAT, National Merit.
So PSAT is given in the fall, usually every October. This is the Practice SAT. And with that, like I said, juniors can qualify for the National Merit Scholarship based on their score. And so this, this year, you can see for our National Merit Scholarships, this, we had twenty-seven commended students, which means that they score in the top two percent of all test takers. And then we have four finalists, and the finalist is scoring in the top one percent of all test takers. And this is state to state, so they want all states, states to be representative. So it's the top one percent of Massachusetts' test takers. And then from the four, we had one scholarship recipient.
I'll walk us through the Advanced Placement courses and results. So again, our requirements are only eleventh and twelfth graders can gain access to program, programming, on-ground programming within the high school. We limit that. And across the nation, basically, they limit it to the percentages that were, are within your report. The vast majority of high schools across the country limit it to grades eleven and twelve. As you can see, we had fifty-five percent of our seniors participate, and forty-one percent of our juniors, and we had four percent of tenth grade participate in the exam. That's nationally, sorry. That's correct, right? In terms of participation rate, as you see, we, we dropped twenty-five students, almost a section. And I think that might be a result of having that high class, that, that large class of two thousand twenty, which was over five hundred students. But interestingly enough, as we only had four hundred people participate in Advanced Placement programming during two thousand twenty-one, our tests increased by five to, we administered eight hundred and sixty-five tests. This bar graph represents, and there's a chart within your packet, around every, again, comparing state, national, SHS, SHS mean scores, state scores, and national scores. In the blue column is the SHS scores, the average score. The red column is the Massachusetts score, and the green is the national score. You'll see across the board that we outperform almost in every AP course that's offered at the high school, often by significantly more than both the state and national average. And that's delineated more within your packet around the averages. There are a couple blips around Chinese language, was below average, I believe, was one of those anomalies, I think. And again, looking at this bar graph, we look at the scoring with AP is scored five through one, five being the highest, one being the lowest. Three is a score that could potentially gain college credit if the college that you choose to attend accepts Advanced Placement programming. If you are enrolling in a major such as biology and you happen to take the AP Biology course, those colleges and universities probably will not accept biology AP credit for a course. So when people are planning out, if they have a, they're looking to be a science major, they may want to look at humanities to either open up elective programming or look to eliminate some of their general education requirements through college universities. So I think people need to be a little bit more strategic in why they're taking the Advanced Placement courses, if they're looking to accelerate learning or open up spots within college universities. So overall, though, what we've seen here is, over the last four years, we've had a kind of a downward trend of, of performance, ranging in two thousand eighteen for a three-year, ninety-four percent of our students in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen scored three or above. And this year, we're down ten percentage points over that span of four years, down to eighty-four percent. Now again, what is that, what, what's caused that? Is it, is it, have we opened up access? Have we, are we not, are we, do we have enough training? Are we looking at the curriculum? Are we addressing individual scores and results and then making adjustments to the curriculum? Are we sending, have we sent people out to actually participate in AP scoring? We haven't as a result of the pandemic. So there's a number of factors that go into this. It's also, what was the impact of hybrid learning last year? What was the impact of, in the two thousand twenty year, what was the impact of having three months off and actually doing virtual learning and virtual testing in two thousand twenty? So I think, I can't make any assumptions about why the trend looks that way. It, it certainly looks that way. We can assume the pandemic has something to do with it, but we also have to evaluate this probably on a longer stretch, more longitudinally, to determine the effects of what's happened in the last two years.
So Advanced Placement Scholars, good news is, this past year, two thousand twenty-one, has seen an increase in the AP scholars. So seventy-one for class of two thousand twenty-one. And this means that students scored a three or higher on three or more exams. AP Scholar with Honors, forty-five of our students earned that. And that's an average score of three-point-two-five on all AP exams and three or higher on four or more exams. And then AP Scholar with Distinction is an average score of three-point-five on all AP exams and a score of three or higher on five or more exams. So there's fifty-six of those. So our total number was a hundred and seventy-two AP scholars, which is good.
You gonna talk a little bit about the profile?
Yes. So we're gonna talk a little bit about the profile. So that sort of wraps up SAT, PSAT, and AP. And all of that sort of comes together with our school profile, which is sent to colleges when students apply to, apply. And the school profile highlights sort of the rigor of Shrewsbury High School's curriculum, or every high school has a, a school profile that does this. This year, I worked with administration, both with Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Vizdlo, on changing our profile just a little bit here and there. And, because really what we want to do is highlight the accomplishments of our students in our school and sort of portray the uniqueness of our school. And what does Shrewsbury have to offer that differentiates ourselves from other schools? So we added a Student Achievement Recognition part of the profile. We put a little statement about the impact of COVID nineteen, which is, I think, really important. And then we added some language around special programs. We changed that a little bit. But typically in the profile, this is sort of the areas that are highlighted, the community demographic, graduation requirements, course levels, academic honors AP, GPA scale, which is very important to the colleges, AP and SAT average scores, which is also very important. And then future plans, which is the percentage of students going on to four-year, two-year, or other options. So really, this is a nice way to highlight Shrewsbury High School, and it sort of highlights our uniqueness and who we are as a school.
Yeah, so I, 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 for those in the audience, remember Cliff Notes. This is like the Cliff Notes version of Shrewsbury High School. It's almost like your one-pager, one or two-pager of what admissions officers in those universities are going to look at, and how do we grab their attention and highlight the most important things relative to trying to improve outcomes or admissions for our students. So based upon Angie's work with college admissions this fall and her previous experiences, she's made adjustments relative to the profile, minor, but again, minor adjustments. This profile within two pages could be significant in terms of what it looks like for college admissions people. So again, kudos for her work around that and bringing another set of eyes to our, our profile. So again, how do we, what are we going to do moving forward? We need to continue to offer our SAT program, which is affordable. It's in, in district at the high school. We also have to have our directors look at and analyze SAT results to ensure that not only are we providing opportunities outside of the school day through SAT prep, but also how do we embed those skills and strategies within our curriculum, whether it's through our literacy-based competencies in English, or history, or mathematics, or science? How do we improve students' critical thinking through those things? And looking at results to help outcomes, not only on SAT, but improve education. Interestingly enough, and I was going to ask Mrs. Flynn this, because I thought we had this in the slide deck, was, you know, we had four hundred and ninety-five tenth and a had this in the slide deck, was, you know, we had 495 10th and 11th graders take the PSAT, which I think is a huge number. And again, I think when we see a dip in SAT recently, I'm predicting a rebound here based upon what we're seeing for scores, I mean, participants in PSAT already. I think it's been a little bit of a dip, but I think that's coming back. But again, we'll have to see what happens in the next year or two. Again, the same thing with advanced placement. We look at the scores, and then we kind of disaggregate the data. College Board has a lot of metrics around this. You can dig really deep and get really lost in this stuff sometimes, too. But again, I think looking at individual student achievement and by section, by teacher, which we can break down and look at results and share that and have teachers collaborate with each other on their results. And then also looking at the trend data, which we, which I talked about, like, in terms of how long do we look at this? Because we've had a dip, is it something institutionally, or is it a result of the pandemic, or is it something else? We have to dig a little bit deeper, but we don't, I don't really have any answer for that right now, other than identifying that we have to keep our eye on it. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Dr. McGee?
Go ahead.
So we have a breakdown. We stratify by male, female for the SAT results. Do we have the ability to look at race, ethnicity, free or reduced lunch, English language learners?
So, yes?
Yes, it's self-reported, so depends on students on the self-reported, but yes.
Are you going to provide us with a report and follow-up on that?
Yeah, we certainly can. I know on SAT definitely, I'll take a look at the advanced placement and what that looks like, but I know, because I just reviewed this, I shared, Dr. Sawyer and I had a conversation this morning about some of the metrics with the 239 students who took the SAT in 2021 and kind of parent level of education actually self-reported that as well. So that was kind of some interesting data. So I can certainly, through Dr. Sawyer, provide feedback on what you'd like relative to that. And I can certainly drill down and look at race, ethnicity.
So, race, ethnicity, free or reduced lunch,
Yep.
English language learning.
Yep.
And you said parents' education, which actually would be even better.
Yeah. Interesting, we talked about, we talked this morning, Dr. Sawyer, about the L population within this, English as a second language of, there's a significant percentage of students who speak more than one language that took this SAT within the 239, but I'll get that information, Dr. Sawyer, you know, forward along.
One thing I can say is that colleges, with schools being test optional, they've seen an increase in students from low-income, first-generation, underrepresented students apply to colleges, and then those colleges are in turn admitting more of those students. So that's sort of the good news about test optional.
I think, if I can just follow up with that, I mean, one of the things that really impressed me, this happened before I got on the school committee, but I believe you massively relaxed the requirements for getting into AP courses. And the result of that was a huge influx in students taking AP and an increase in the scores, which implies that the screens we were using to keep people out weren't particularly fair. And we actually improved outcomes by opening things up a little bit. So what you're saying about the SATs and everything kind of goes in the same direction.
Jason?
Just to, first of all, thank you for the report. A question actually about workload for advanced placement students, or course load, rather. When you were talking about the advanced placement scholars, I was struck by this national AP scholar level. And I noticed we didn't have any this year, but in the past years, we've had a few. And if I'm understanding this correctly, these would be students who got at least a four on eight advanced placement? And that's over the course of their, that's over the course of their entire high school career?
Correct. It's over the course of their entire high school career, but it's an average score of four on all APs taken and four or higher on eight or more exams.
And certainly to something that Dr. McGee just referenced, I applaud actually increased access to AP programming. And certainly, every student is different, but I'm curious if you could both talk, what is considered an appropriate course load typically for a student? Obviously, dealing with student stress levels, mental health issues, obviously a student who's taking a, what is an appropriate number of advanced placement courses for a student to be taking?
I'm smiling out of the mask. It's really contingent upon what students think they can handle. I think, I think it's up to parents to have conversations with students around that because it certainly, it varies. Typically, for a junior in high school who's accelerated, we'll see anywhere between one and three. I think students in junior year who take three advanced placement courses are probably in the top 2% of their class. And we've had struggles in the past 10, 12 years ago, we've had significant issues with students becoming ill as a result of being overworked and can't balance and manage that stuff. So it's really kind of trying to figure it out. There's a number of students that take two, and that seems like a good balance. We have students that say, I don't want to take, I want to take one, and maybe take two senior year. I think the idea, certainly, there's opportunities for students to continue to, you know, we don't recommend more than three junior year. And I said, like I said, is, when we say this, our advanced placement night, which is coming in February, for families and students is like, two's a big number for juniors, three's almost unbearable in terms of, you have to be really, really elite student to take three and manage that coming into it for the first time. Senior year is a little bit different. You're maybe used to some of the rigor of advanced placement. You might have more time, you're better at managing it. We have a number of students high performing, again, top 2% that might take three or four at the high school. And then we might have some people that self-study. Again, I said this, I think, a meeting or two ago, colleges don't look at self-study exams, advanced placement exams for admissions. You could have a score on it, but if you're not enrolled in the course, they don't give it much weight. So those people that think they're getting an advantage by self-studying in freshman year or sophomore year, there's no real advantage to it if you're self-studying. You can take an exam and get a five on it, but the college and university won't give a whole lot of weight to admissions. They may waive a course based upon year five, but they're really looking for the depth of knowledge and understanding within a course. So there's a correlation between participating in course and having outcomes and understanding the depth and then getting that versus self-studying. So I think colleges and universities, admissions-wise, are looking more at like, and I got to say this because this is, they're looking at multi-dimensional students who can manage a rigorous course load, participate in some form of service, contribute to your community with solutions, not point out problems, but contribute with solutions, and then also having a job. Like, work experience and soft skills are so critical that college admissions is putting more weight, including the Ivy League schools, Stanford, Harvard, Yale, Cornell, those schools are putting a lot of weight and consideration, probably more weight in work and part-time job than self-studying an advanced placement course. So to answer your question, Mr. Palich, what's the right number? I'm not entirely sure. I think it comes down to what students can manage and handle. I think it depends on what their grades are relative to when they first dip their toes in AP, and then what their passions are. But reducing the barriers is something we've done as a result. We've certainly added, provided more opportunity for students. And I remember some of these barriers where, the story I always tell is, we didn't have a student that scored the appropriate number on critical reading at the time on the PSAT, and I overrode the policy we had and said, I want this student to take AP language. She went off to take AP language and got a five on the exam, and went on to Holy Cross and had a great experience at Holy Cross and graduated with honors. And it's like, so some of those things that we set up prior, you know, 15, 20 years ago were certainly barriers which we've come to eliminate and reduce, but provide more opportunity. So the short answer is, I guess it depends. I think those that are looking for highly competitive colleges want to look probably between three and five advanced placement courses.
Thank you.
Lindsay?
Yeah, I want to thank you for the report and the, and the time and effort that goes into it. I think I really want to echo Dr. McGee's comments. For me, seeing this report with a bit more of a DEI lens is what I would like to see, of understanding the gender breakout on one test is, while appreciated, I feel like it's missing a full story around, I think you were maybe asking specifically around SAT, I'm just as curious around AP, of like, who's, who's getting in? Because to me, who, you know, there's a long, there's a long tail before a young person says, I want to take an AP, to feel like they have the confidence enough to take the AP, that they've been prepared, that their parents understand the potential importance, not over-importance, but potential importance, and sort of what we do as a district, and then how they do on it, right? And so kind of each, each one of those steps. So that would be an important reason. I think it was noted in some of the town DEI work, I know it's important as a, as a district for us to kind of look at this, but as we think about some of the annual reports that we do, how do we kind of put that in in lots of different places so that we can keep our eye on the ball? And that's, I think, an important direction I'd like to see us move.
Yeah, it's a great suggestion. We can certainly take a look at that and retool the report for the coming years.
Thank you, thank you, Lindsay. And I agree with my colleagues, I think digging deeper into this data will be very helpful for us as we plan going forward and looking for inclusivity and making sure that we're doing all the right things as a community as well. And one thing that strikes me is this changing landscape since my children were in school and taking SATs and, you know, how everything's really changed. And I think it's maybe for the better a little bit because there was so much emphasis and stress on some of these standardized tests, and there may be students who, just like you said, they may not do well on a standardized test, but they are quite capable of being very successful. So I, I'm not sure where I fall on this, but I think my, my children would be very happy to hear this. One question I do have, as we move forward, and I know on the APs, I think our school system and district does a really good job of trying to get families and students to understand what it does and what it doesn't do. And I think there's still that, oh, if I take an AP, I'm going to get into the school of that school. So I think the more we, we drill down on that, the better, because there's so much stress in life on top of it. And a few years ago, we did have college admissions officers come before us, and they talked about what they look at. Is there any way that something could happen again? I thought that was very helpful for us as a committee and that the landscape is changing. And do you have something like that at the nuts and bolts night?
We plan that, we have that at our junior planning night. So I believe it's January 27th this year. It's the last week of January, but we will have college representatives in, and they will talk about sort of college admissions. And you, you get that firsthand, you know, experience of what they really look at. And I think it'll be really important this year, as they've seen, this is the second year of the pandemic, and what are they looking at? I went to a state university update at Pittsburgh State, and it was really important because what they said to us is that many of those schools don't plan on bringing tests back as part of the admissions, except for certain majors, nursing, engineering, sometimes business. They will always probably require SAT or ECT scores. However, they said, because they're optional, what they're going to look at very closely are first-term grades, senior year, and they will look at math and English grades more prominently in that senior year. And then they also said that, and I found this very interesting, that demonstrated interest was something that they were also really looking at. And I think that's because students are applying to so many schools, they really want to see where the student is most interested in going.
Interesting, because their landscape is changing as well with all of this.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Dr. Sawyer, any comments or questions?
I want to thank Ms. Flynn and Mr. Bizidlow for the report, and certainly, at a future date, we can provide, under separate cover, perhaps, we'll be able to, we have a few busy times coming up at the high school right now, but certainly, in terms of giving some more demographic data with the statistics, that's something that we can work to do. But I do think that I applaud the high school, that they continued to a variety of parental informational and student informational sessions, like the one that Ms. Flynn just described, to try to provide that information that can help families. Being a parent of a current college sophomore, a graduate of Shrewsbury High School, and a current senior, certainly the second time around, you get a little more familiar as a parent understanding, but there's no question, even, things have changed a little bit in those couple of years. So I think helping families know that, and I think other options in terms of, you know, I know that Ms. Wen beforehand, and it will continue it, you know, recording these opportunities because parents always can't come in person, and, you know, shifting some ways to utilize technology, whether it's Zoom or anything else, the more webinars, whatever it is that we can do to provide good information for families so that they can access that and make informed decisions, as we heard at the report that was made recently about where class of 2021 members ended up doing for their plans after high school. And we really try to emphasize a good fit, and we want to be sure that we're providing an academic program, an opportunity for an academic program that sets students up to achieve what they'd like to achieve in terms of access to what they want to do post-secondary education. But we also are not interested in trophy hunting, so to speak. You know, this is not a school district where we're looking to say, well, let's try to pump as many kids towards quote-unquote selective schools as we can for somehow, some sense of prestige, or let's really pump up kids going into AP courses so that we can be higher. I know there's a ranking, I think it was through the Washington Post originally, you know, that will rank schools, you know, and frankly, you know, we're a relatively highly-ranked school, and some of that plays into it. If we really wanted to, you know, focus on improving our ranking, we would push more kids into AP courses. But that's not necessarily, necessarily good for kids. And then what's good for kids is more important than our ranking. So, you know, we'll continue to work through these pieces, but I do appreciate the information they're providing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we'll continue with our report. This is going to be Ms. Clouder, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and she will provide an update on the state MCAS testing.
Hello, everyone. Nice to see you in person again, too. I'm hoping this is going to show up. Okay. We miss Brian when he's not here. He's in charge of all the backend, and he does it so seamlessly, you don't even notice. I have to brush off my tech skills. So I have a lot of information to share, and I'm well aware that this is the third data report you're hearing about. So I'll leave some time for questions at the end, but if there's something I'm sharing that you have a question about, don't hesitate to stop me there. Essentially, I'm going to try to tell a broader story about the data, which is a little different from how we've approached it in the past. So if there's something that you're looking for more information about, I'd refer you to the report. And for the public members of the community that are watching, there's going to be a detailed document to accompany my presentation tonight. So I wanted to start with just a general reminder, because we haven't talked about MCAS in a while, about the annual state test being an efficient way to gather a lot of data about a lot of kids in an efficient way. And the goal when the state embarked on this common assessment for all students was really to make sure that we paid attention to the achievement levels and the student outcomes for all kids. And improving outcomes for kids is at the heart of what we do all the time, and especially when we're considering assessment information. And at the same time, MCAS is really just one way that we check on the overall health of the system. So if we think about it like a checkup, you know, you get some information annually, but it's also really helpful every once in a while to kind of do your own self-check about your health, because there's things you could miss if you're only checking your health on an annual basis. This year, MCAS data is especially helpful in identifying needs and instructional gaps in particular, but it's also, by the time we're talking about it, relatively old information. So I want to use it to tell a little bit of a story in broad strokes, but I also don't want to give it more weight, given all of the challenges around administering it last year and the sizable gap between the last administration in 2019. So why do we test all students? The answer is really high expectations. MCAS really stresses critical thinking, the ability of a student to apply their knowledge, and to make connections across subject areas. And so as the test was modified from its original version to the next generation version, they really focused on testing skills that were replicated in the state standards. It's also was crafted to really look at readiness for college and career in a way that beyond kind of content or subject matter knowledge. And when we think about that, you know, within Shrewsbury, you think of our vision for the portrait of the graduate kind of matching some of those beliefs as well. So looking at data helps us get a sense about readiness by giving us a picture every year of how kids are approaching state standards. And when we look at it, I mentioned also the recalibration that happened with MCAS 2.0, or what they call the next generation MCAS. 2019 was the first year that all students at every level took the next generation test. And what that meant is that the test was calibrated so that they all aligned, because the way the test had been rolled out, different grade levels had kind of iterations of their tests, so that a grade eight test, for example, was more rigorous in some ways than a grade seven test. And so looking at the growth was a little skewed. Before the pandemic, it was the last year that everybody took this first version of the test. And so I want to remind people of that because at the high school, for example, this is only the second year that they've experienced that, that shift. MCAS was canceled altogether in 2020, and so it returned last year, but in an abbreviated form. And as you know, some students took it in person, and some students were proctored as they took it, and teachers listened as they were on their iPads. And so, looking at the data for a whole host of reasons, you know, we want to look at broad strokes and not get too nitty-gritty about it. at broad strokes and not get too nitty-gritty about it. In general, when we're looking at MCAS data, we're looking at two scores. Achievement scores indicate how students are doing relative to the state standards or the benchmarks set in each subject area. So it's looking at how kids are doing in each content area, whether it's English Language Arts or math. And a growth measure, a percentile measures how an individual student's test scores compare to other students who have similar scores. So of all the students that scored really well, how many of those, you know, what's the percentage of growth in that cohort for a student in that group relative to all the other kids that scored well? And so it's, the two things are distinct and it's important to remember that. And going into this year, because students in grade five took the test for the first time as fourth graders, they don't have a growth score for grade four this year. And there's a larger gap between the scores where we do have measures for. So in addition to the kind of the questions that we typically ask about growth, growth is a little bit wonky in itself this year, just for those reasons for everyone. So growth is distinct from achievement, it's important to remember that. And it's also the other big idea is that students are compared only to their academic peers, not to all students. So we're looking at students of, of kids in cohorts based on their score history. Okay. So if we think about the three content areas that are assessed, I'm going to look kind of at a different story within each of the content areas as a kind of indicator of where we might go next. And when we think about science and technology, the first thing that typically we're looking at grades five and eight and 10, but because the science and engineering test wasn't required for graduation for the class of 2023, we're only talking this year about the results for grades five and eight. And if we think about looking at the test as an indicator of kind of the impact on the epidemic, of the epidemic on learning, for science, we don't see a whole lot of an impact. Our scores for grade five, you know, we can see 59%, sorry, got to put my glasses on, 59% of students met or exceeded expectations compared with the state average. So we're pretty, pretty consistent in, you know, beating the state average. But those scores with, with, you know, different adjustments in the number of kids in exceeding versus meeting, look pretty similar to what they looked like in, in 2019. And the same thing holds true with grade eight, with 61% of students in the meeting or exceeding categories over 41%, which is the state average. So if we think about science and technology as being, you know, relatively low impact, then we look at kind of, so what is the impact on ELA and in math? We see some of our best scores in English Language Arts. And we see some of our, in terms of student achievement scores, and our best outcomes are really shown at either end of the tested grades. So in the elementary level, where it grades three and four are tested, grade three scores are among the strongest. And also at the other end, grade 10 has the strongest overall scores. And we see the lowest scores for students in transition grades, which is the students at grade five and grade seven. And what's interesting in the data is that in the grades that follow those transition grades, we see a rise in the number of student scores achieving levels. So ultimately, we, we start strong and we end strong. And in the middle, when we're looking at who's most vulnerable, we see that middle level, particularly at transition grades. And I chose to take a closer look at a few grades to kind of illustrate this point. So again, the, there's a chart that shows the scores for each grade in great detail, and then the comparison scores for other districts in each detail in the report that's published, so the public will be able to access that. But in the interest of wanting to tell a story versus lingering in the details tonight, I'm going to just focus on a couple of grade levels to illustrate my point. So when we look at grade three, our grade three students continue to outperform the state by a wide margin. We've got 74% of students meeting or exceeding state benchmarks in English Language Arts. And more significantly, we did well relative to other comparison districts. So as we look towards how we compare to area districts, which is school districts that are members of the Assabit Valley Collaborative, you can see that Shrewsbury Public Schools students in grade three scored the second highest scores in ELA last year. And similarly, when you look at how we compare to districts with similar demographics, what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education terms are DART districts or, you know, district analysis and review tool districts, the metrics they use as a comparative tool show us that 74% of Shrewsbury's grade three readers are in blue, with only two DART districts scoring better at 79%, which is relatively close to 74. And again, by the time students get to the high school level, 84% of our students met or exceeded expectations, far outperforming the state average of 64% in ELA in 2021. And, you know, you can see in the report, although I haven't included the graph here, that Shrewsbury High School scores in the top three districts in the Assabit Valley Group and is the top performer among our DART districts, which include towns like Arlington, Natick, Sharon, Wachusett, and Walpole, among others. So where's the stretch? If this is where the success is, where, where's the need to focus? So if we look at grade seven, only 59% of students in grade seven met ELA benchmarks. And this is the third year in a row where scores in ELA declined for this grade. For context, only four other districts, Berlin, Boylston, Southborough, Neshoba, and Westborough, posted better scores in the Assabit Valley Group. And even among the DART districts, for Shrewsbury's grade seven scores, we were in the top four, even though relatively speaking, it's not an area of strength for us. But the fact that we have a trend of declining scores there suggests to me that that's an area that we really need to focus on. And as I mentioned, MCAS being kind of an annual checkup, I'm really gratified that we have a universal screener that allows us to have more of those interim data points so we can see if this trend will continue if we look longer over time. So I mentioned both student achievement data and growth data. Essentially, if you think about achievement as this axis and growth as this axis, you want to see schools here. And typically, we see that because we don't have grade four data included in our grade span here, it's only looking at grade six to eight for 2021. And you can see relatively our achievement is good, we'd like to see our growth go more towards the right, because we have not met the threshold for what would be expected in terms of expected or moderate growth. So one of the things Desi has said about growth is if the participation rate was lower, results may have been different if more students had taken the test. And so the low growth range for the middle level, kind of, I'm loath to make too many assumptions about that. Again, this is kind of more broad strokes, but it's lower growth than, than we saw in 2019, with the biggest impact to growth at the lower levels. And grade eight is kind of an unusual exception, even though they paid special attention to recalibrating the test for grade eight, it continues to be kind of an outlier in terms of the results, especially, we see that for growth. And in contrast, when we look at the student growth reported for grade 10, we can see that, you know, they're well within the expected growth range and doing quite well at a growth rate of 51.4. So if the expected range is 50 to 60, we're kind of right in the middle of what's expected, which matches kind of the performance overall for student achievement. So not only are kids learning at a high level, but they're growing from one, one year to the next. This is just a graphic that shows kind of the expected range in green and where each grade level average, you know, student growth percentile is. And you can see Shrewsbury and ELA, the high school has met that expected range, but the other grade levels did not grow at a rate that you would expect. And again, you know, coming back from a pandemic year and a big gap, that's not a shocking thing to me, but something we certainly want to monitor. So another thing that we really look at is how does the results of the aggregate compare to certain subgroups of students? And we look particularly at what the state calls a high-needs subgroup. The high-needs subgroup includes students with IEPs, students with low economic status, and students who are EL, English learners or former English learners. And because it's kind of the mother of all subgroups, it's a, it's a significant number of kids, and I think that's why it's a useful metric to look at. If we look at the student growth percentiles for 2021 in English Language Arts, we can see that really growth was impacted across the aggregate and the subgroups. You can see that, you know, we're looking at relatively atypical low growth for both the high-needs subgroup, which is in orange, the state average, and also for Shrewsbury, which is in the dark blue. And yet...
Did you say we could interrupt you during this?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, no need to...
You know, when I look at the gold bar, the high-needs students, sometimes it's nearly the same, sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower, that leads me to wonder what the noise level is here. What are your thoughts?
It's really hard to tell, given all of the, you know, like, we don't have grade, we don't have grade four in the mix. And that usually helps me kind of figure out what reasonable growth is. We also see, you know, we're looking at the last measure of 2019 to 2021.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a bigger gap here. To me, it says everybody was impacted by the shutdown in ELA. I mean, it's a short answer. And then I, it also says, you know, dig a little deeper and see what that looks like in terms of other measures. What's interesting is when you look at the high-needs subgroup in terms of achievement outcomes, and you look at the percentage of kids that, who are meeting or exceeding the benchmarks, you see a staggering difference between what the aggregate is in terms of the percentage of kids, in terms of all of Shrewsbury's students, which are dark blue, and the orange, which is the high-needs group. So I don't think our, I don't think our disparate results have gone away. I think that, so to me, when, when you asked me like, hm, I think, well, it looks like it had an impact on everybody's growth, but when you arrest the growth for everybody, students in need get to be more in need, is how I'd answer that, I guess.
Thank you.
It's not really scientific analysis, but I think one of the things we've seen, both anecdotally and in looking at the common assessments, is that kids who were struggling pre-pandemic have more, are coming from behind, just that much more.
Can I ask one question, too? If you go back one slide, just so I understand, the, the growth percentile being a different way than we think about a lot of test scores that we look at. And so the grade five, is that then, those were young people who, in the spring of 2021, were in the fifth grade, and we're comparing to their growth from third grade? Because they didn't take it in, in fourth grade, is that right? And so looking at the, then, you know, the 19 bar, 19 bar jumps out, of course, you're like, that's, that, that doesn't, that's...
The kids who were scoring in the same ranges, too.
Right. And they were identified as high-needs, would they have had to have been identified as high-needs in both years? Can you, you can move out, because some kids could potentially be on an IEP and then not.
Yes, it's not only, it's not only comparing them to high-needs students, it's, the only comparison is to students who had the same test score in third grade. So they're saying students who qualify in high-needs, what that number says, that 19 says that students in Shrewsbury in fifth grade last year who qualify as a high-needs student because they're in one of those, one or more of those categories. Their score in fifth grade compared to the kids who had the same score in third grade, 81% of the kids did better across the state than they did.
Thank you.
So it's only that comparison group. And, and so when we look at some of these numbers being closer, as Dr. McGee's question earlier, it, it seems to show that in some of these other years, our, our students who are in high-needs are actually improving their test score more than students who had the same test scores, and usually it's two years of data, the previous two years. And that's why, you know, which they call, frankly, I continue to think that the term growth is a misnomer, because it's really about how'd you do compared to these other students. It's a comparison measure. In terms of, which is why you see such a difference between if they did better than, and it could be better by not a whole lot of points, than the cohort they scored the same as in the previous tests, they're going to, they're, they're going to have a high growth score, but their actual performance, when you look at that next slide that Amy just put up, is still trailing far behind the typical score of a typical student, including the, the whole aggregate of, of the school district, I should say. So again, it's, it's a tricky measure. You know, the more I, I consider it, the, the less I like the term growth, because it really seems like it's measuring how much they've grown. It's really measuring, you know, how many more kids they beat in terms of their score on the test compared to kids who had the same level. As I try to think of analogies, I think of, you know, we just finished the fall cross-country season, and so if you had a cohort of students who ran the 5K cross-country course, and you said, well, we're going to compare the students who are juniors, and we're going to say, how, we're going to compare them to students who had the exact same time on the cross-country course across the state of Massachusetts in a 5K, who ran the same time as freshmen and the same time as sophomores, and we're going to see what their times were as a junior. And, you know, you could have improved your time significantly, but if the other kids who had the same times improved a little more, you could have a very low growth score, because you didn't, it's how, it's how your score compares to them that third year. So that's really what it's measuring. I know when I was talking to Dr. McGee earlier today, it probably is a more valuable measure in the aggregate than it is for an individual student. But again, we have to take this into consideration, what does this mean? And unfortunately, without probably drilling way into the deep state-level data, it's hard to know exactly by how much. You know, did students who were scoring at a very high level, did they, did their scores drop a little bit? And most of the students kept the same or did a little better? And so, you know, they may get a very low growth score, but their absolute performance might be extremely high still. And is that something really to worry about? If that score was dropped a lot, you know, a lot, that would be something to be more concerned about. So I think, you know, to, to reference what Dr. McGee said, you know, how do we separate the signal from the noise around what this means for us and what it means for, what we're trying to do for students in order to help them be, help them improve academically over time? And if we're seeing that compared to other students in the state, our kids are not improving as much, especially compared to similar districts, that's a question for us to look at. And that's something that, you know, especially at those transition grades like Ms. Clouder spoke about.
Yeah, so, well, we celebrate kind of the success of the aggregate. For example, the really great scores from English Language Arts at, at the high school for all students, I think looking that only 54% of our high-needs students have met that benchmark is something that we really need to pay attention to. So if we think about math, if we've looked at science as being, well, not all that different in terms of past scores, and English Language Arts being, of all the scores are relative strength, the strongest signal to kind of tune in and lean in more was around math. So if we looked at, you know, our youngest and oldest students posted the strongest results, this time in terms of looking at elementary, grade four results were strongest. Again, grade 10 outcomes at the high school level were the strongest overall, and grades five and six saw the most impact in terms of the decline in scores. Math is where we really want to look at, kind of, the health of the system at the next checkup. So if we take a deeper look at grade four, we see that, you know, 64% of our students in all met or exceeded state benchmarks for math, which is a drop of 15% from where we were in 2019. Now, when you think about that, context is really everything. So looking at comparative districts, you can see that we're certainly not the only one to have seen a relative drop. And so when we compare to area districts, you know, we're not alone in seeing that decline at that grade in the subject area. And if we look at DART districts, you know, we, we see something similar. We're among the top three in the grade four math, even though we see that decline hitting that, that particular grade level. So looking at kind of what we can do to think about remediating and supporting math, how we differentiate math to catch kids who are behind up, you know, what are... you know, what are the metrics that we have to measure interim progress? Those all become more important, as do some of the software tools that we have that can provide targeted practice to kids based on what they need to learn next. If we look at grade ten, again, on the other end of things, not as high as our English Language Arts scores, but, you know, seventy-six percent of our students met or exceeded state benchmarks in math, which is only a three percent drop from the baseline year with the Next Generation Test results from 2019. Math scores for grade ten are among the top four of the Assabit Valley districts last year, with only Arlington and Sharon kind of outscoring us. And among our DART districts, yeah, among our art DART districts, and they're only by one or two points. So very competitive in terms of the results, but down overall across the state. The biggest need story, if, if we're looking at grade seven in ELA, is looking at grade five in math. And again, I'm very struck by the transition years, at, at the middle in particular. So our result is lower than we'd like to see, at fifty-four percent of students in fifth grade in math meeting or exceeding benchmarks. When we look at the Assabit Valley, you know, only four of the eleven districts scored higher. No, we're the third highest in the Assabit Valley, and only four of the eleven districts in the DART group scored higher. Again, growth is a different measure, and here's what growth in math looks like with slowly, slower, the balls are a little bit lower in that grid, because the achievement is lower. And you can see, you know, relative to the expected rate of growth, it's not where we need to be in terms of grade six to eight. But it's higher for grade, grade ten with an average growth rate of fifty-three. So when you look at that across, the average student growth percentages across the grades, again, that greed band is that expected range. Grade eight in the high school are kind of where we would like to be. Grade seven is closer, but we have, you know, an indicator there. When we look at high-needs, this is the corollary in math to the graph we stopped to talk about in ELA. And you can see kind of this similar pattern happening with closer rates between students in the high-needs group and the state high-needs group, and then, I mean, the state aggregate, and then Shrewsbury in dark blue. And again, in math, you can really see, when you look at the number, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations, high-needs is again in orange, and the all students in Shrewsbury are in dark blue. You can see that our high-needs group is exceeding the rate of state high-needs group average, but we still have a significant gap between where we want to be with all students in Shrewsbury and our high-needs group. So what, what do we do next? I mean, it, we use the data. We use the data to kind of think about what are the skills we need to identify? Are there prerequisite skills that are holding kids back in terms of making progress, particularly in math? We calibrate district assessments to say, okay, what are the skills we really want to progress monitor and track? We look to see, are there trends across levels? For example, I was talking to Donna Rice, who's a coach at Spring Street in a coaching meeting recently, and she said, you know, kids were making kind of silly mistakes around directionality. And I think, I was like, yep, we probably skipped directionality in order of focusing on numeracy and number sense. So thinking a little bit more about, you know, what first, next, and last looks like, or some of the more simple geometry concepts might be at issue. And then, really working with district leaders to develop kind of some data literacy routines around, when do we look at the STAR screening assessments? Who do we progress monitor? What do interventions look like, particularly at the middle level? And how can we do better at identifying students that need support, and then matching the support to what the skills they need to develop are? So I know, Sandy, you liked this slide when we talked about it with STAR. I think it's a really good one in terms of a metaphor for saying, if we thought about MCAS as like the annual school picture, we would get a sense of every year how a student is performing. I'm really grateful that we have a universal screening tool that can also function as a way to monitor progress kind of interim, so that we can see, you know, how, how kids are doing in between MCAS administrations, and particularly what's working when we intervene, that we can replicate. So teams are excited about collaborating to do that work, and, you know, sometimes a little overwhelmed by the data. There's a lot to look at, and it's important to think about, you know, for me, when I look at the story about science or ELA or math, it's like, okay, so let's focus on math interventions. What are we doing systemically to intervene with math? And what seems to be working, and how well, particularly, is the adaptive software that we put into place in the pandemic working to kind of close some of those gaps? So if data is the engine that kind of fuels collaboration, it's really helpful to know that we have a booster in the form of STAR, you know, accelerating that, that car and that engine. And I think, you know, telling stories like this to simplify the data and make it more clear, kind of empower teachers to say, okay, so if I have three things to worry about, I'm gonna focus more on monitoring math, and what are the key skills that need to happen for grade four as they transition to grade five? So that we can see, you know, better, better math skills as, as kids transition. And how do we foster stronger communication between levels so that kids feel supported as they transition? Those are some things that are top of mind for me. But what's top of mind for you?
Thank you for that report. Questions, Dale?
So sort of a two-parter. There are some gaps in here that, that are focusing your attention with the MCAS scores. And I guess the question is, do we see a performance, just with regard to test grades and report cards, reflecting the same thing in the schools? It's part one. And part two is, is our curric, are we sure our curriculum is completely aligned with what the MCAS is testing?
Yes, in terms of looking at the standards, we are, our curriculum is aligned to, to mirror those standards. In terms of what we're seeing, common assessments mirroring these results, I think yes and no. I, in general, I think we are seeing kids making more progress as readers, and more, there's more needs in terms of math. I also think we're looking specifically at literacy at the middle level, because we see both math and literacy as needs there. And, you know, looking at putting some things in place to teach reading skills that typically aren't middle-level skills, because we've got kids who have transitioned to the middle level who were behind as a result of, of missed instruction. But not all of the kids in a cohort are behind. So you have a wider range in a middle school classroom of reading needs than you would typically have. And teachers who are trying to balance the small-group reading and also attending to the benchmarks for that grade level. And that's, you know, that's a challenge. I don't think we're gonna fix it all in one year. I think that the data affirms that other districts are trying to solve the same problems we are. And, you know, one of the things that's really helpful to me is to be in JABA-like groups and kind of hear, how do, how do our attempts compare to kind of what other districts are doing? And particularly partnering with Westboro and the Summer Institute has been really helpful in terms of looking at our content instruction.
Anyone else?
Jason.
Thank you, first and foremost, for the report. This is a high level of detail we have in our meeting books, which, you know, is, is very helpful, I think, for us to read through. And also, it's, on top of that, it's, it's helpful to have you explain this, obviously for the benefit of community members, but also for us as well, to eliminate some of these, these data sets. I, and Dr. McGee had touched on a question that I wanted to ask about, whether or not what you're hearing from our classroom teachers and our curriculum specialists as you work with them and engage with them about these results, whether or not they're, what you're hearing from what's happening in the classroom is, is in alignment with the results that are coming in. But I guess I'm just gonna make a comment on what I consider to be the real imprecise nature of this as a tool. To, to your point, obviously, there is value in having these, these metrics for broader comparisons. But I look at some of these results. There is the imperfect nature resulting from the pandemic, the fact that there was that gap in, in the administration. There is the deeply flawed, as the superintendent pointed out, in my opinion, deeply flawed approach to growth, which I don't think is in alignment with what most individuals would consider to be a metric of an individual student's growth, the way MCAS looks at that. I do know that these results can sometimes be a source of stress for, and focus for families. I know that the media tends to fixate on these. Among many takeaways I have from this presentation, just sort of an overarching one, is just that this is far from a perfect or even fully clear picture of how a lot of things are going in the district. I applaud your work to try to find the signals within the noise. But just emphasize, I think, that the most valuable data we're gonna receive is always what's actually happening in our classrooms.
Lindsay.
Yeah, and I certainly echo the support for trying to sort of distill this down to something, something meaningful, but I appreciate all the, all the detail. It, it seems to me that when the district receives the MCAS scores, in many ways, the people that you comment on trying to sort of digest this are folks at your level, building leaders, some curriculum folks trying to look and see where things are. I'm wondering, we also are hearing from a lot of our educators, they're feeling stressed and asked to do lots of different things, and now we have STAR, which is sort of like more data in regular intervals more often, which is great and wonderful. But how are you thinking about what support teachers need to kind of take that data and do something meaningful in the classroom? They're not waiting a year, obviously, so that's the, the exciting part. But adapting your curriculum is not easy either, right? And then deciding what to, what to focus on. So I just wonder if you could think sort of from a, sort of professional development angle as we have these things, how do we help those on the front line sort of use the data in, in ways that we think are hopefully compelling?
I'm so glad you asked that question, because it gives me a chance to kind of applaud our curriculum coordinators and our instructional coaches, who have worked really hard on the PD for people around this. I think first, in thinking about what will be the, the screening times for everyone, and how do we meaningfully schedule them in advance so everyone knows they're coming? And we can also make sure that those administration dates aren't conflicting with other things that are really burdensome to teachers, like report card entry, right? But also that they're timed close enough to other assessments that you get a point of comparison between the STAR and the more familiar common assessments that have been developed on grade-level teams, because that's also important to teachers, right? Just as I was seeking context and seeing, okay, well, that number seems kind of low for us, how low is it in other districts? Teachers want to do that, too. So they want to see, okay, I don't really want to give up my DRA, because I want to see the STAR data and the DRA together and see how they, how they relate. So in, in a sense, that's a little bit more work, but it also feels like more comfortable work to teachers. So one of the things that's happened as a result of the collaboration is that in the platform itself, it does some of that screening for you. It identifies the kid who is, who is in need of urgent intervention by color coding. So it limits the number of kids to talk about. It streamlines some of the early intervening team efforts where, you know, typically, teachers would say, I'm concerned about so-and-so's progress. I want to discuss him with colleagues. And you'd start the meeting, kind of outlining what the challenger, the issue was, and then inviting some brainstorming. What's nice about having a, a platform that everybody can see together is that you already know who to discuss. It's part of your grade-level agenda. Now, teachers would probably tell you, there's never enough time for a grade-level agenda, because time is our nemesis everywhere. But it simplifies some of those procedures that before we might have to put, you know, kids' data on, on Post-its and put Post-its around the room, and that would take fifteen minutes of a meeting. The other thing that's really nice about it is built into the platform are some suggested solutions. So you can choose subgroups of kids to track. You could use the same tool much more often than a screener to kind of see about progress. But the thing that's most exciting to me is what you guys alluded to earlier, which is the work that our educators have done internally. So because everyone's using the same assessment tool at the elementary level, it sparked a conversation about what are those interventions that are go-tos for, at each building? And the coaches have created this one document that has different tabs at the bottom of. If, if you're looking for a fluency intervention, here are the common resources we recommend. If you're looking for a comprehension intervention, these lessons are the ones we've developed. And so, across the district, we have the best of the intervention lessons in one place. So a teacher isn't on their own thinking about, all right, so I have this student in need, but I'm not really sure what to do about them, and now I have to go talk to somebody else. It's like a common resource bank that everyone has developed, including teachers. And so, we're looking to try to build that out a little bit more in math, because it's something that, based on the DRA, we had more, better built in, in ELA. But I think that, you know, it does, it is work. It's important to acknowledge that it's work, because I think learning to be a data team is another kind of group skill. And being able to say, you know, when we, when we first looked at MCAS data at Coolidge, we did it with teacher A, teacher B, teacher C, teacher D, because it was not safe to have teacher names on that data. By the, you know, time we, you know, fast forward four years later, it, it was comfortable enough for a teacher to say, I'm teacher B, and my kids really stink at main idea. What is everybody else doing? Because I know it's not my kids, right? So I think that's the power of collaboration in, in response to data, but it does take time to do that. And it's important to say, I think for, for teachers, they were really focused on meeting kids' needs socially and emotionally when kids returned to school, because kids were, you know, experiencing difficult delivery. And, and so, we're families, and you, you have to make sure you build a community first. So I think when they heard that having the data didn't necessarily mean that they had to start monitoring, just it gave them a tool to do what they already would do, which is attending to how kids are doing in a different way. It lowered the pressure a little bit. But I do think it's hard work. Teaching is hard work.
Thank you. Anything else?
As you were talking, I was thinking, as Mr. Powell said, we have a very detailed reports. And I was reading at home and looking at, you know, that fifth grade, tenth grade. I'm like, well, there's definitely a gap, but something's working right as we get to tenth grade. You know, they're, they're meeting or exceeding those expectations from MCAS. And it is just, it's a data point. And I know, on behalf of my children's school, I would think I would get those reports, but it was that lag time. I mean, that was a whole, they're already moved on to a new teacher, a new class. So how do you, how do we use that data meaningfully? And I think having the STAR screening is more real-time information for, for teachers. But I think you touched on the point of the amount of work that goes on behind the scenes to help any of those students who are struggling or, or have needs on top of everything else that they're already doing. So there, there is a lot here. This is always a report that's full of data, and it's really hard to kind of parse it out, which is the most important piece of it. But you do a good job of explaining it and helping, at least me, understand what it all means. So thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
Doctor, any comments or questions?
Also, just want to thank Ms. Cloder, because she puts enormous amount of time and effort into this work. And I know that, you know, her leadership around helping our other curriculum leaders and school administrators work then with teachers to try to be diagnostic and prescriptive around how we can use this data in a reasonable way. You know, with, with cautions, as Mr. Powell said earlier, I mean, this certainly is, is not precise, as precise as science as some would like to make it out to be. At the same time, where it can be useful, we should take advantage of it for the benefit of, of student learning, which is ultimately our core purpose. But appreciate the, the attention and the, I, I agree the way Ms. Cloder can explain these pieces in ways that make them more understandable, and that's something that, I think, as we continue to develop some of the ongoing processes in ways that hopefully can support teachers through using these tools in ways that hopefully are more time-efficient and more effective, more importantly.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Mr. Collins will provide information regarding enrollment projections for the district's student population over two years. This report includes information on historical and projected enrollment from the England School Development Council and the Shrewsbury Town Manager's Office. And this data is very important to the district as we look at budget and your future needs.
Okay, have just what you wanted, which is another report full of data. And thinking that the College Board might give you all some credit in AP Statistics after tonight, mini-course. So this is an annual report that you have in your packet with respect to enrollment projections. And I'm gonna go through some information here, so that you have at the end of this kind of a look into the future, most importantly, for next fall, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which we are in the process of developing next year's budget for. And it'll also take a look at the five-year outlook as well. So we have two projection methods, as you know, that we typically- So we have, uh, two projection methods, uh, as you know, that we typically use. One is produced by the Town Manager's Office, uh, and this uses the so-called traditional cohort survival method, uh, using, uh, five-year averages of survival ratios, which is basically kind of a fancy way of saying, you know, what happens to a, a grade level of kids from one year to the next when they advance for, uh, say, grade one to grade two? And if there are 400 kids in the class in grade one, what happens when they advance to grade two on average? Does it go up a little bit or does it go down? And so that's the cohort survival ratio or the percentage change from one year, uh, to the next for that cohort. Uh, and then the second one is an external, uh, enrollment projection from the New England School Development Council or NESDEC. Uh, they use a slightly different, they use a three-year, uh, survival cohort survival ratio and, uh, birth to kindergarten ratio of 99%. So slightly different, uh, methods and, of course, that's gonna give us, uh, slightly different results. So these are purely quantitative, um, methods of, uh, projecting enrollment. And just to kind of display for those folks at home that might, uh, be watching, um, you know, this slide kind of depicts, uh, on the, on the top half, uh, that the calculation of the enrollment cohort survival ratio. So for example, the K to one, five-year average, the Town Manager's Office basically tells us that on average, when a kindergarten grade advances to grade one, we gain 16.1% students in that cohort. Uh, and from grade one to grade two, we gained 3.6% more students, so on and so forth. And I'll just point out that the change from, uh, grade eight to grade nine, of course, the students opting for, uh, private high school or Asmit Valley Technical High School, uh, that survival ratio goes down. So on average, it's 92% going from grade eight to grade nine. And then on the lower half, you can see basically how this kind of mathematical model works out where you basically just kind of trace, uh, this cohort, uh, in the highlighted yellow, um, all the way down from their kindergarten grade, uh, back in 2018, all the way to the year that they graduate in 2030. And, uh, so it's, you know, fairly certain in terms of predicting, um, those student cohorts because those students are actually already enrolled in the district. And we got some pretty good, uh, data on, uh, how that pattern evolves. So that's the Town Manager's Method, and then the NESDEC projection is, uh, very similar. Uh, again, and I'll just point this out, that, you know, this is just another way to look at this, as I was talking about it, that this projection, uh, all these cells that are in white, uh, basically that projection is based upon kids that are already enrolled in the district. So there's not a lot of, you know, looking into a crystal ball there. And then the ones in the light blue are based on kids that are already born, and then the, uh, ones in dark blue are based upon, um, estimated birth. So those ones have more imprecision, if you will, uh, than the ones that are in the, in the white cells. So what does this look like, uh, in terms of, uh, one-year outlook? Uh, and on this chart, we've got two years of actual data, uh, back going from, uh, 2016 to 2017 school year, when the district was at, this is K through 12 only, not preschool, 5,960 students. And then this year, as of October 1, uh, we were down to 5,721. Of course, some of that is due to, uh, the so-called pandemic effect, and it, we're no different than other districts in the Commonwealth or the nation where, uh, there was a, a, a loss of, uh, students, uh, in public school enrollments. And then looking out on the right-hand side, the projection on, for the one-year and the five-year, um, this, this, uh, basically, uh, looks at, um, for next year, the NESDEC production has us at 5,646, and the Town Manager's at 5,618. Again, a drop-off of students, uh, for next year, a slight drop-off. And then the five-year, uh, is even kind of, even more, uh, disparate, if you will, with a drop-off of 288, 38, uh, students from the current year, or 4.4% differential there. So, um, what does that look like in terms of age, uh, grade banding? This is using the Town Manager's projection here in terms of the one-year and the five-year outlook. Uh, so on the right-hand side, you know, you can see that for the 22-23 school year in that red bar, for example, uh, we'd expect that the, um, uh, Sherwood Middle School is gonna decrease by about 32 students, um, and, uh, elementary K through four is gonna drop off by about 41. And Sherwood, uh, would, uh, excuse me, Oak would drop off by about 25, and then the high school would probably be relatively flat. This has it dropping by five students. But the thing that we do know that this mathematical model doesn't know is about the change in the admissions policy at Asmit Valley Regional Technical High School. So, um, you know, that, we probably see, I, I'd say, level or maybe, uh, slight, you know, a few more students than the current year at the high school. Uh, and then this chart is basically taking the same, uh, data but using NESDEC, uh, as, as the baseline here and, uh, looking out in the one- and five-year, uh, projections. This, uh, chart here, uh, basically takes our enrollment in the green column, uh, from, uh, this past October and does a grade by grade. This is more granular than what I just showed you. So for example, uh, both projections are saying that our kindergarten grade will drop off by between 30 and 42 students compared to what we currently have of 343. Uh, grade one would increase by, you know, about 60 students. Grade two would drop off by about, you know, 65 to 70 students. Uh, and then you can see it kind of segmented, K through four, grades five and six, seven and eight, kind of like I just explained, uh, using those other charts, but this is just a more granular way to look at it. And this is in fact what we use, um, in terms of, we'll break this down even further in terms of school-based, grade-by-grade enrollment projections and do our staff planning, uh, for next year's budget development. And we looked at that already with our school building principles once, and we'll take a, a look at it one more time. This chart here just kind of shows the, uh, pattern, if you will, at our preschool. All those numbers that I just showed you before do not include the preschool in terms of any of those totals. So this is the preschool broken out separately, and in the yellow columns, um, that shows basically how we start the year, October 1st, and then during the year, we keep adding students as kids age into the program. Once they turn age three, they are, become eligible for public school, special education services in our district. And so we gain enrollment, uh, on average by about 15% during the school year at the preschool level. So you need to be planful about having spaces for those children, uh, as they age in. And this, next couple of charts basically says, well, let's take a look at how the past projections have done, you know, what's been their level of precision? Uh, and so basically, uh, this, this chart shows what the fall 2020 enrollment projection was, uh, by the Town Manager and NESDEC in the, in the blue and the, and the red numbers, and then what our actual enrollment was, uh, as of 10-1. And so basically, this shows that both of them overestimated, uh, enrollment, uh, between one and a half to 1.8%, or about 90 to 100, 105 students. Again, um, we're having some, we think, some leftover effect of the pandemic, um, and having fewer children than was, uh, projected. And then this takes a look at, uh, how was the, the projection from five years ago, back in 2016? What did that tell us about this past fall that we just had? And so basically, the, the blue bars, the Town Manager's projection from that fall of 2016, looking at, um, um, five years forward, and then NESDEC is in red, and then, and the green is our actual enrollment. So you can see that, uh, in the K through four level, both projections overestimated enrollment at five through six. It was a slight underestimate, um, and seven and eight was overestimating, and, and the same was, uh, holds true for, uh, the high school NESDEC projection. So, um, in sum, you know, for the, for the total district, you can see that, uh, the, the range is between 234 to 324 students kind of overestimated. So it was off by between 3.9 to 5.4%. So some summary highlights, uh, for, uh, the upcoming year. What does this tell us right now? Most immediately is we're, we're likely to see a small enrollment decrease, uh, again, for next year, um, except at the high school, which we expect will probably be level, uh, level enrollment overall. And that's still not a good place to be, uh, level enrollment at the high school because that school was designed for 1,475. So, uh, we'd still be, you know, about 360 students over design capacity. And as you know from prior report, uh, that school is, has a 99% room utilization, uh, percentage, meaning that they are very stressed for space. And given the projections and, and, uh, what I just explained to you and showed you in the charts, it's, uh, not likely that we're gonna need any additional classroom teaching staff to maintain class sizes for next year. And so we'll continue to, uh, look at that as part of the budget process and, uh, make recommendations, uh, to you through Dr. Sawyer's, uh, budget presentation, uh, next February. So that's kind of where we're at right now, is the one-year is looking like a slight decrease. Both of the five-year projections are also calling for, uh, a decrease. And, you know, I think the, the wild card, if you will, is, you know, is this pandemic effect gonna persist or are we gonna see next year, uh, you know? And I know Dr. Sawyer's used this term red-shirting, parents red-shirting their students, uh, gaining entrance into the system at the kindergarten level, or they're holding their kids back because kindergarten is, is not a required, uh, grade. And so have they been holding them back, um, until this kind of pandemic, uh, makes its way through and that we're gonna kind of see more of a bump up in, in the next year? So, uh, that's yet to be seen. But that's our enrollment projections for, uh, the, the one- and five-year outlook, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any questions or comments? I do have a question. I assume that this does not include, um, home-school students. This is just enrolled students.
Correct. These, this is just in-district enrolled students, does not include home-school, does not include Asmit Valley Tech or students in out-of-district placements. None of those students are included. These are kids in our, in our schoolhouses.
Did we, I don't know if you have the number available or if you know off the top of your head, did we see an increase in homeschooling for students?
So I, I included a chart in your printed report. Uh, I didn't put it in this presentation here, um, but yes, from, from 2019 to 2020, uh, so not this Oc, past October, but, you know, kind of in the, in the heat of the pandemic, our home-school population went up to 40 students, whereas it typically was, you know, anywhere probably close to 20. So it almost doubled in, in the heat of the pandemic. And then, uh, so we're at 40, uh, last fall. This fall, we're at 29 students homeschooled.
So there's a potential that those students could come back at some point?
They could come back as well. Yep. And of course, you know, they, they come back in grade one and grade two and grade three.
Right.
Just depends which grade that they.
Great. Thank you. Anything from you, Dr. Sawyer?
Uh, no, I think again, it's a one-year snapshot, uh, because of the way the projections work. If, uh, some of these have a long tail in terms of these K and one reductions, but we'll have to see if that returns to some more normalcy. Uh, I, I think as we approach the, uh, pre-K to 12 space study that, uh, the town has commissioned, that Mr. Mizikar's office and my office will oversee, um, and when I say my office, I mean Patrick. Uh, you know, we will need to, uh, consider, uh, much, as we did with the redistricting process, uh, whether to use, uh, employ the, the services of a demographer to get some more in-depth, uh, pieces that would look a little more deeply at things like, uh, you know, housing and, and, uh, other elements that we may be, we may be seeing. But I, you know, certainly, this is not unique to Shrewsbury, there's districts all over the country that have seen reductions in number of students, and we're gonna have to see how that plays out over the next couple of years.
Great. Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Collins.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have our minutes from November 17th, 2021. Are there any changes? Okay, seeing none, those can be marked as accepted as distributed. Uh, we do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, Purpose 7, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an opening, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and this, and the chair so declares. Purpose 3, the Shrewsbury Education Association Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association. And C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or con, to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union per, personnel. Purpose 2, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and we will return to open session only for the purpose of adjourned for the evening. We have a motion that we adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moving second, and a roll call vote is required. Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Pallett?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.